All right. Thank you, and welcome to the July 8th, 2025 Meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First order of business, acceptance of minutes from June 10th, 2025. I hope people have had a chance to read them. Would anybody like to propose a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Do we have a second?
All seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you, it's unanimous. Next, we have a new public hearing at 170 Pleasant Street. Would you please come up to the podium? And would you identify yourself for the record? Oh, sorry, yes, we need to read the notice, thank you, sir.
Finally dropped. Notice is hereby given that the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the North Andover Town Hall at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Massachusetts, on Tuesday, meeting July 8th, 2025, at 7:30 p.m. to all parties interested in the petition of Little Learners Child Care Center, Inc., for property at 170 Pleasant Street, map 70, parcel 20, North Andover, Massachusetts, 01845, in the GB zoning district. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195-4.9, Table 1, dimensional requirements, for a 60-square-foot sign in the GB zoning district for the purposes of constructing ground sign of 60 square feet. Specifically, applicant has requested a variance of 35 square feet for an area of 13 feet and for area and 13 feet for height. The square footage proposed for height is 60 feet in area, and the square footage required per Table 1 is 25 feet. The square footage proposed for height is 21 feet, and the square footage required per Table 1 is 8 feet. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the office of the zoning department located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Massachusetts, on Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, from the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and Friday, from the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. By order of the Board of Appeals, Michael T. List, Chair.
Before we get started, I just want to fill you in on something that happened a little bit behind the scenes. So because we just had renewals, and because some of those members just found out today that they were being renewed, not all of them were able to get sworn in. So the consequence of that is that we have four eligible voting members for this item. I think my suggestion, if you are willing to go through it, is that we will have our discussion, and if at the end of it, if you decide to do a continuance to the next meeting so that we have five voting members, that is up to you. If you would like to proceed with four voting members, that is okay too. The difference between having four and five is that if we have four members, you need four yes votes. If you have five members, you still only need four yes votes. So that's just, I want to give you the full context. I apologize for the short notice on that. It is the way these things sometimes work. But if you're up for it, let's please proceed, and please identify yourselves for the record.
Sure, thank you. Brian Vaughn from Smolak &amp; Vaughn, I'm the attorney on behalf of Little Learners Child Care Center. With me tonight is Loriann Messina, who's the principal who runs the childcare center, and also her husband and son are with her as well, both work there. It's a true family business from some local North Andover folks. The application we have before you tonight is for a sign variance. There's an existing sign which is on the site. It's been there for as long as I can remember. It was used to advertise the prior business attached to my memo. There is a picture showing the existing sign as it stands now. They purchased this property in 2022, and with the purchase, of course, it was, under our bylaw, it isn't protected as a pre-existing non-conforming use. It's been deemed to have been abandoned, so in order to reuse the same sign, it no longer meets current zoning for the two variances that we have requested, one for height. The maximum height allowed now is 8 feet, it's 21 feet. The maximum square footage of the facade of the sign is 25, and it's currently 60 feet. If you look at the pictures, however, given where it's located on Route 125, it seems to be an appropriately sized sign for the property. We would also point out that the property next door, the Hafners, actually has a very large sign, I believe the facade of it's even larger than this one. Not looking to change anything except to put the sign that exists back into use, to put a new facade on it. Pictures also show that, except for the height and the square footage, it otherwise fully complies with current zoning in terms of its setbacks and locations. Happy to answer any questions.
So the idea here is to not alter the physical stature of the sign that already exists, it's simply to...
Exactly, just to reuse the existing sign structure that's there. The only thing that would change currently, you know, when it was taken out of use, the prior advertising, you know, the logo for the prior business was removed, so it's right now just blank, and it would be to just replace it with the logo and name of the Little Learners Child Care, which again is also depicted in the plans included with the application.
Is the location of the sign conforming at this point? Is it conforming in all ways except for the...
Always, yes.
Dimensions?
Always, except for the overall height, the maximum allowed would be 8, and it's 21 feet, and the square footage for the facade of the sign, maximum under current zoning would be 25, and it's 60.
But like the setback is sufficient?
Setbacks are sufficient, correct.
So the alternative, the logical alternative would be get rid of that sign and build a smaller sign in the same location, or roughly the same location?
Not necessarily. I mean, if the sign were going to be taken down, it probably could be recited maybe closer to 125. You do run into some issues then. I know on past matters before this board, there's been some concern with actually the current zoning. When the signs become lower, you tend to block off some visibility. So, you know, this actually came up, of all things, on another...
Yeah, we had an extensive discussion about this.
Another childcare, you know, facility on 125 that I happened to permit at the old Beijing, and, you know, there, one of the concerns is with the sign, when it was, you know, lower to the ground, would block off visibility for traffic, and it was actually some of the board members preferred that it was actually taller than what would be allowed to allow greater visibility. In this particular case, where it's located now, it's not really a sightline issue because it's more, you know, removed from the roadway, but I think if you start having a smaller sign, then the need is probably to pull it closer to the street, and then you might have those issues.
Is it lit, or is it no public...
No, it's, well, it's not internally illuminated. I believe there's...
I think you can see the lights on the picture that's there.
They're shining down on the...
Oh, okay. And the tree behind the sign, is that Learner's tree, or does that tree belong to Hafners? Do you know?
It's like a little weedy catalpa that's...
Oh, that's all weeds. I think that's like the property line between both of us.
Do you know, like, would you have the ability to cut that down, or it's Hafners?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I just, because I think if it's lower, I'm not sure behind that weeds or tree. It looks like a tree from the picture.
If I went lower, you wouldn't see it in the parking lot where it is.
Yeah, it would have to be closer to the road.
Right.
So I will say that that catalpa will grow, it wants to be a big tree. So that will be something that you'll have to think about eventually, no matter how tall the sign is, the tree will want to be taller than that sign will ever be able to be. So just to put it on your radar. I guess, did you price out, because like the way it previously was, is it had like the big logo on the top, and then it had like a little filler box below that with some other things that it doesn't even have in there now? Did you price out what it would be to like lower it to the height of that little filler box instead of having it quite as high?
We did not, the, I think in the past, there may have been something underneath that, but I believe that that filler box was, the current facade area was always part of the sign, if I'm not mistaken.
I mean, when I looked on Google Maps, there was something else in like that little square that's now empty just below where the sign is going to be. If you want to talk, you'll have to come up to the microphone and introduce yourself, but I don't know if that, if we're ready for that, Chair?
I think you need to...
Yeah, yeah.
Director of Business Operations, that piece you're talking about is a support, it's not a sign, it's a support for the two rails that hold the sign. To my knowledge, there's never been anything posted there.
Okay. I just, my impulse driving by it was that the Hafner's sign is square footage bigger, but it is lower than this, and especially because the building is substantially lower than the sign would be. It does look much larger than any other sign along this stretch. So that's why I was thinking if there was an easy way to split the difference and still have it be visible...
It's not cost-effective to rearrange that sign or lower that sign. It's not something that would be cost-effective for the business itself.
You just remove it altogether at that point?
Yeah, it's, you know, we're looking to just replace the facade. There's, you know, the piece you're talking about...
Oh, I understand the goal, and I understand the reasons why. I'm just trying to like also fit in with the reasons why zoning exists, which is kind of like not have anything stand out too crazy. So I'm just raising, I'm not even voting on this, I'm just raising an idea, that is, that stood out to me when I was driving by it. You know, I mean, it's just much taller than all the other signs in the area.
Could I follow up on that question? Did you say if this weren't allowed, that you would just do away with the sign entirely?
Well, we would...
I'd have to put a sign somewhere.
We would have to put a sign somewhere, but we, it's not...
But it wouldn't be that structure.
Wouldn't be that structure, correct.
Do you have a sign on the building?
Yes, we do. Yeah, we were required to put it for, you know, identification purposes.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah.
Is it true that like the real concern is the cost and not the visibility? It sounds like if, if not for the variance, if not for obtaining a variance, you could put the sign closer to the street probably, and that could compensate for...
We would lose parking spaces too, which is an issue. If we had to move the sign, we have to maintain a certain number of parking spaces to be within regulation, we would lose parking spaces, so moving the sign really wouldn't work.
And it's such a busy corner that, again...
That's another issue, the corner is a lot of traffic. If we put something lower, you're going to, you're going to impede visibility at that corner, there's a three-way intersection there.
That is one of the other issues, is that the sign would be pulled out closer to traffic and would then become sightline visibility issues if it were a lower sign, I suppose.
Yeah, we're just talking about putting a sign panel on an existing...
Right. That's all we're trying to do, is put a sign so everybody knows that's my business.
Right, I mean, it's already there.
Anybody who's been in town knows that's been there since...
So as far as any impact it has on anybody, I think it's zero.
I mean, the sign's there, even if I don't use it, I can't, the price of removing the sign, I would just leave it, you know what I'm saying? So the sign's there, so I'm just trying to get my...
I mean, I think, to channel Ms. Jacobs, the reason that we're having this discussion is to say, yes, it's what's there, can we, is there a way that we can make it a little bit better than what's there and have everybody, but still be a reasonable solution, right? And I think what we're trying to do here is sort of problem solve with you and work through, okay, is this an option, is this an option, is this an option? And if the answer's no, and we all agree that it's no, then we can, we keep moving forward, but I just want to make clear like what we're trying to do here. We're playing a little bit of devil's advocate because we want to work through what all the possible permutations are here.
Because you guys might have been planning this for months, we just heard about it last week, right? So we have to also be part of that process.
Any other thoughts? Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak on this issue? Yes, sir? All right. Please identify yourself and your address for the record.
My name is Joe Levis, and I own the property adjacent to this, at 154 to 160 Pleasant Street. We've been there about 18 years, and that sign's been there probably 30 years. Dr. Sabrada had a medical office there, it was always used to this day. I don't think there's ever been a complaint about the size, the height, the width, anything about it. I don't know if you've been to the property?
Yeah.
They purchased the property about two years ago. What they have done to this property, the investment they put into this property is off the shots. They're also providing an amazing childcare. We don't have enough of it. I mean, they've stepped up, they've made a major investment, they run a really nice operation, they're great neighbors, it's a family-run business, and I honestly don't know what the issue is with an existing sign, which is changing the name on what it's showing. It's not bothering anybody. And I would, I would hope that you guys realize, it's a small business. They're investing in this town, they're doing a fantastic job, and we need to help them. I mean, you want to change the size of the sign, it's probably going to cost them $10,000 or $20,000.
Yeah.
They don't, you know, it's just, it's like a slap in the face. So I'm in favor, I hope that you guys can figure this out.
All right, thank you.
Do want to make it really clear that asking questions isn't necessarily having an issue with anything, just having a conversation, just having a conversation. We're all going to be here no matter what.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Yeah, and I do want to reiterate that, that we are not necessarily trying to be adversarial, it is mostly, you know, part of this is a public process and is meant to be also making it clear to the public why it is that we do what we do. Is there anyone else who has thoughts or questions?
I'm curious about the illumination.
Yeah, go for it.
Is this, do you intend to have it eliminated 24/7?
If you look at the, that's an illumination bar, that's an LED illumination bar, and we had those changed when we did the construction to the building, they're on a timer, so they are only going to be working mostly during the winter, in early morning, or like, you know, pre-opening hours, until the sun comes up, and then they shut off approximately an hour or two after it gets dark, because there's no need to be...
And to be clear, we, so we do not allow by zoning internally illuminated signs in North Andover, so if they were to make it internally illuminated, it would need to come back to us.
Right.
So it would be a new variance, and so...
Yeah, no, we're not...
Yeah, we're not looking for...
But technically, with the current illumination, they could have it lit at any time, and it doesn't, we don't have any curvy on it.
The external illumination, we do not control. That, no, absolutely. I just wanted to be clear that from the internal illumination standpoint, it would...
I'm just thinking of it, I see the value add to like the parking lot area, pre-opening and post, as parents are, you know, defeating traffic, trying to pick up their kids before they're in trouble, having had small people in my life, lots of them. But I was just, I was trying to understand, like, would this become a midnight ice or a 125?
No, no, just for the electric bill alone. Again, small business, we're watching.
Just to identify that it is a daycare, that's the biggest thing that I'm finding that is people don't know that I'm a daycare, they still think I'm a medical facility.
We've literally had, like, people show up for docs' appointments or to serve papers to doctors for medical records, and it's like, nope, not us.
One could argue that's actually also a security risk.
Oh, we don't want to talk security risk.
All right, any other thoughts?
So just, was this planned, prepared by Fast Signs?
Yes.
Our secretary needs to be able to make it...
After reference, something, so...
All right, well, so I think we're at the point where you guys have a decision to make. If you are comfortable proceeding with four voting members, we can do that. If you would prefer to wait until next month, the four voting members would be Mr. Testa, myself, Mr. Killalay, and Mr. Ginsberg.
I think we're comfortable to proceed tonight.
All right. Do we have a motion to, well, any further questions from the board before we, okay?
We'll close the public hearing.
Yeah, exactly. Do we have a motion to close the public comment?
I'll make a motion to close public comment.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. We are in deliberations, so would anyone like to voice their thoughts?
I, I think it's a no-brainer, so I won't take up any more time than that.
All right.
Yeah, I think I'm good with it, I think that if you lower it and that tree becomes an issue or whatever, I think to see over that tree, and if you're coming from Hafners up, the property is elevated, so I think that I think it, I'm good.
Yeah, they'll have to find a way to have Hafners present here.
Yeah, so...
It's going to grow.
I would say that, you know, I understand the restriction, and I think it, I think there's good reason for it. You know, and I think in a perfect world, we wouldn't have signs like that perpetuated, because, you know, to me, it looks unnecessarily large for that area, and I drove by both ways, and, you know, I think, you know, I think you could do fine with a, you know, with a smaller conforming sign, but I think, you know, we're here for a reason, and that's because there are other considerations, and there are good times to look past what the, you know, the bylaws are trying to do, and so I think this is one of those times, so...
Yeah, I agree. I think if we were starting from scratch, my preference would be for a sign that's probably about 10 feet lower and about half as wide, right? That would be, that would be where I would go. It would also probably mean that it's slightly closer to the road, and if it's, if it were a fully conforming sign, I would actually worry, to Attorney Vaughn's point, about traffic and about the visibility of car, for cars coming in and out. Trust me, a year ago, we had another applicant that was here that he was talking about, where we spent two sessions...
I was here.
Oh, you were here, okay. I couldn't remember if you were here or not, but, yeah, it was, it was an extensive conversation that I would rather not go back to.
Also childcare.
It was also childcare. And so I, you know, I don't view this as the ideal sign, but I'm considering the other implications and the idea that it would be probably tens of thousands of dollars to make them build it the way that we want to, that seems like a lot to ask of somebody. All right. Would you like to...
Sure.
Make our motion?
I'll make a motion to approve a variance pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195-4.9, Table 1, dimension requirements, for a 60-square-foot sign in the GB zoning district for the purposes of constructing ground sign of 60 square feet. Specifically, applicant has requested a variance of 35 square feet for area and 13 feet for height. The square footage proposed for height is, I'm sorry, the square footage proposed, am I reading this right?
Sorry, take out the for height, yeah.
Yeah. The square footage proposed is 60 feet in area, and the square footage required per Table 1 is 25 feet.
The height proposed...
The height proposed is 21 feet, and the height required per Table 1 is 8 feet. We'll incorporate plans that were submitted with the application, including a plot plan dated November 12th, 2024, by Andover Consultants, Inc., and a proposed sign plan dated May 21st, 2025, by Fast Signs.
All right. Mr. Ginsberg, do we have a second?
I'll second, I'll second it.
All right, Mr. Ginsberg.
Aye.
Mr. Killalay?
Yes.
Mr. Testa?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Congratulations, you're all set.
Thank you very much.
Brian, is that other daycare, what's the status of that?
They, they're getting closer. They, they're some insubstantial changes with planning, but it's coming, it's coming.
All right. All right, we have our next applicant, 326 Forest Street. Come on up, and Mr. Killalay will read the notice.
Notice is hereby given that the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the North Andover Town Hall at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Massachusetts, on Tuesday, July 8th, 2025, at 7:30 p.m. to all parties interested in the petition of Mark Biandi...
Yes.
For property at 326 Forest Street, map 106.1, parcels 13, North Andover, Massachusetts, 01845, in the R1 zoning district. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195-7.3, Table 2, dimension requirements, for one-side setback in the R1 zoning district for the purposes of constructing a sunroom. Specifically, applicant has requested a side setback needing a relief variance of 10.7 feet. The side setback proposed is 19.3 feet, and the side setback required per Table 2 is 30 feet. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the office of the zoning department located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Massachusetts, on Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, from the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and Friday, from the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. By order of the Board of Appeals, Michael T. List, Chair.
All right, if you would identify yourself and your address for the record?
Mark Biandi, 326 Forest Street, North Andover, Mass.
Welcome.
This is my wife, Mary Ann.
Hi.
So we want to construct a sunroom off the back of our house that would come straight out from our house and end parallel to the end of our deck. The way our property line goes, according, you can see it on the plot plan, is that it's angled, and so we don't have the 30 feet required, but we're looking for 10.7 feet relief in order to get this done. It's a 20-by-six, 20-by-16 sunroom, 10 feet high, ball glass, solarium.
And what is the setback currently from the edge of your house?
I think it's 19.3.
Okay.
No, 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 no.
26.1. What is it, I'm sorry?
26.1.
26.1.
Maggie Breeze proposed one.
Proposed, right, okay.
Okay, so 26.1, okay.
Is it at the height of the depth?
Yes.
Yeah, and...
Is it at the height of the depth?
The sunroom.
Sunroom.
Yeah.
And your property definitely fits the bill of, oh yeah, there we go, it definitely fits the bill of an unusual shape.
It is.
So is that, I don't want to interrupt you if you have more to say, but it looks like you're, the neighboring property there...
or on the neighboring property, the house is considerably further into the lot.
It is a set way back.
Sort of like, it's not a flag lot, but it's like a very narrow lot to start, limited frontage, and then it gets wider as it goes back.
Correct.
So, is it correct for me to say that the, where you're placing the solarium is not really, it's not directly across from where their home is?
No, it's not. Their home is, where our sunroom is gonna end, their home is set way back to the right. And I did speak to them about it, and they had no objections whatsoever.
Is there screening, or is there, is there fencing, or?
We have a fence. We have a wrought iron fence. We have six dogs, and so we do have a fenced-in backyard.
There's some trees along.
I'm sorry?
There's some trees along the property line, aren't there?
I'm sorry?
Are there trees along the property?
There are trees, in the front, you mean, or?
In that area.
Yes, there's all trees.
So that sort of screens it as well?
Yes, there's a buffer between us and the neighbors. In fact, when the trees are all filled in, you can barely see the neighbor's house.
So they wouldn't see them?
No.
So I have to ask this, I apologize. The shed that you have there.
Yes.
Has Mr. Hutchins talked to you about the shed?
No, he hasn't.
Okay.
What does that have to do with this request?
Ah.
It's just something he's bringing up because he sees it.
It, it's not conforming, and people very often build sheds that are not within the setbacks and don't realize that it's something that unfortunately technically needs a variance to.
Yeah, that's, that shed has been there for, we've owned the house almost 23 years. I think the shed's been there 21 years now.
Yeah.
I was mostly asking because I wasn't sure if that affects how people can vote on this.
No, it does not necessarily affect how people vote on this. It may just determine whether or not we see him again.
Who isn't voting tonight because of being sworn in? Both of you?
Yeah, so we have five other members.
So I'm notoriously not a fan of double digits in terms of people asking for relief because I just think that's pushing the limits. When people go to double digits, that's me. A little, I'm back and forth on it considering the fact of where the neighboring house is.
Do you want to see a picture of the way it would come off the deck? I have an existing picture of the back of our house now, and the way it would come off, there's still a ton of space between.
And trust me, I appreciate that 30 feet is a bunch, but 30 feet is kind of where the setback is in that aspect. And I also appreciate the want for a sunroom, but it is a want, not, I mean, I, I'm a stickler even when it's more so of a need versus a want for people. And I, I understand what you're doing because I understand the common sense of making the sunroom match up with the deck. I, I appreciate all of that.
Have you discussed your plans with the neighbors?
Yes, with the neighbor in back of us, the neighbor on the side of us, directly on the side of us, they had no issues. They thought it would enhance their property values because it's a very expensive sunroom.
Yeah, sure.
Well, Alexandria, you could look at this as being only seven feet difference from what exists right now, and that's, seven feet is not double digits.
I was thinking that same thing.
I do think that the shape of the lot is crazy.
It's extreme.
Yeah, extreme, like, so, I mean, again, not, not to say that.
One of the things that, that is unfortunate is that I don't have anything, and please don't take offense to this, I don't have anything from anybody saying that they think this is a great project in terms of the people who are directly affected.
Right, but I do think the fact that the house directly next to them is set way back, and it, it's not abutting the neighbors, it isn't abutting the neighbors' property, but probably mostly their driveway, that, to me.
I'm not saying I'm not being a stickler. I like my consistency.
Exactly, and that's why we love you, your consistency.
But sometimes, sometimes you bring that up, and there are some options, like, you know, they can make it smaller or do something, but it would be awkward to try and change this, because they're only double digits by 0.7 feet here. So, but, but it would be awkward if it wasn't lined up with the house in the way that it is.
Do you remember that application that came in who wanted the third garage, and we were literally talking like two feet? And that was kind of more of like a need?
Didn't we give them that?
No, we made them shrink it so that they would have.
But I don't think they gave up a garage. I think they just made them smaller.
They, they made it smaller, but my, here comes my problem. I have a bunch of things that are okay with this, and then a bunch of things that make it not okay, and I don't have something tipping a scale.
I think the thing, if this was, if this was a rectangular lot, I would be more, I think, willing to go into your camp, which is to say that, okay, you could shave a bit off of it, but like, it's a bonkers lot.
I mean, I think the other one was also bonkers, as I recall, because it was dividing a lot.
Yes, it was.
Yeah.
And we.
Did you look at? Well, and I, I don't think I was on your side on that one.
No, but they did, they did leave, because that was the one we opened public comment back up.
Right.
They left, shrunk it somehow, came back to get rid of that two feet, and that was two feet.
Yeah.
I just don't think that they even, like, got rid of a garage bay. I think they just made them all slightly narrower.
I think they got rid of a garage.
They got rid of a garage bay?
Whatever they did.
Well, we don't know.
I don't, I don't, I don't think they built it, so.
No, it's not, yeah, this was like two, two months ago.
Did you consider other spots or other locations?
Oh, yeah.
Did you consider other locations adjacent to your house or other spots to put it?
We, we did not, because our back of our house is where the room at, where the existing room is, then a deck, and then a back of a garage. And so, the only way this flows within our house is we're situated now.
Yeah, you have to like.
Front of the house, right side, back here, including.
Right, we have the deck, then we have a garage.
Yeah, you'd have to, like, deconstruct part of the deck to put it anywhere else in the back of the house, right?
That deck is a beautiful deck, two-tiered deck.
Right, but that's what we, like, if, if we were to insist, that's what would have to happen to put it on the back of the house, right?
So, I mean, the, the one thing you're saying about public support, and I get all that, internally within our house, the support it gives my wife and I to have a beautiful room to go into with plants and, you know, and it's, it just would mean a lot to us.
I fully, trust me, I fully appreciate that. I, I really do. And I guess that's why in some ways I wish I had had a letter from the neighbors saying that they think this is a great thing, because then it's hard, it's hard for me just to sit here and be a stickler on double digits with, almost, and the board can tell you, I'm stickler on double digits on all applicants.
Yeah, it's not personal.
Comes up every time.
Every, every time. And that just becomes my, my hiccup.
So, I, I think that, given the fact that you've talked to your neighbors and their thumbs up, if you move to continuance, and I apologize for the delay of the time, and just come back with letters that may give Alexandria some more comfort.
I also don't know if you need my vote.
Right.
How many, do we need?
You need four out of five votes.
Which is an option.
So there you go. So I might not even matter.
I, I have a question about the roof line.
The roof line?
Yeah, so the, the documents that are included here, that looks an awful lot like a greenhouse to me and not just a.
No, it's not a greenhouse. So we have an existing, when we bought the house in 2021, there was a dilapidated porch. And what we did was, we closed it in and made a room out of it. And right now, we, that's where my wife has plants, and, and so what we want to do is bump out that room and just extend it out. The sunroom would extend off that room. And that's how it would get, parallel to the deck, but this just happens to be all glass.
Got it, okay.
So it'd be a, it would be a pitch ceiling.
Does it make a difference either way?
Well, it kind of does to me. If you're, if you're asking for a double-digit variance, and again, I agree, this lot is wonky as all get out. It's a very fascinating shape.
Yeah.
You know, if it's a greenhouse, you could, you've got plenty of space to put a greenhouse wherever it needs to go. If it's a Florida room that happens to be glassed in, and it just happens to be where the plants go, but it's not truly a greenhouse in the fact that the, the roof does not ventilate, and you're not attempting to, you know, do much more than maybe manufacture a few tomato seedlings in the, in the spring, then I feel like it's a different functionality, so it has a different argument.
We don't even do that. We don't grow vegetables or anything. These, these are strictly nice house plants, and.
What's the pass-through back and forth between the rest of the house like, is it like?
So it's a, just a French door that goes out from our family room into the existing room that we have now.
Right.
And it would just be, the wall would come down at the end of the room into this glass room, so it would be all open. It would be a part of the house. It wouldn't be a separate.
Got it, yeah, that's what I just was trying to understand.
I got you. Yeah, no, I just, I was curious.
Yeah, there wouldn't be a separate door going from that other room into this solarium. It's all gonna be one big room.
All together.
Yeah.
Is there a door from it to the deck?
I'm sorry?
Can you go, can you go from it to the deck?
No access to the deck.
Because that's the short side over there, right?
Right.
Because it's peaked coming away from the house.
Right.
When the house is, as it was originally built, right?
Correct.
I mean, this has always, it's always been non-conforming in terms of the.
Yeah.
The side yard.
Correct.
Setbacks might have been, what were the setbacks back when this house was built? See?
I don't know.
When was the house built? Let's look through.
I'm just, I'm, you know, I'm just, my point being is that it very well could have been conforming.
At some point.
At that point.
That's possible.
And even if it wasn't, it'd be 4-point-something instead of 10-point-something. I'm agreeing with the, the data point.
So, the, the room that's off the back of the house now presently that you, said you put a roof over it?
Yes.
Right, closed it in, and this sunroom is gonna be attached to that.
Correct.
Does that room start at the back of the house or the front edge of the deck, or is that main house jog back?
It starts at the, it comes out, because it was an existing porch deck, it came out from the house a little bit.
Right.
But the room itself, the beginning of the room, where you enter from our family room into this room, does start at the back of the house.
At the edge of the deck?
Correct.
Right, so do you guys get that?
Yes.
So.
Yeah, draw the line straight across there from the deck.
Yeah, yeah, and I mean, if we basically asked him to pull back two feet in order to not be a double-digit, it would literally just be two feet short of the deck. The reason would be that we asked him to do that.
Two feet short of the deck or two feet short of the house.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know which side they took from.
Yeah.
I just feel that the angle of the house, the shape of the lot, you know, opposite each other. If the house was spun counterclockwise a little bit, they probably could have got to 30 feet when they were building it, but maybe the setback wasn't 30 feet back then, maybe it was 25 or 20 or whatever.
I mean, they have like 34 feet on the other side.
Yeah.
They spun it and moved it, they could fit it all in.
Well, they probably wanted that dimension for the garage, right, to turn that garage.
That's funny, because you would think they would put the house that it was straight on the road, but.
Right, yeah, no, exactly. I mean, look at the house in the back, too, so.
The road's kind of curved right there. I mean, I think the, the closest houses have to be more than 100 feet from the corner of the house, right?
Oh, yeah.
There's no dimensions on there, but like, well over 100 feet, right? Don't look at me about.
Yeah, no, it's definitely.
Just visually.
The front setback is 50 feet, so it looks like that's a lot more than twice that distance.
More than twice that, right?
Yeah, it's almost 150, about 130.
That's pretty far.
Yeah, the, the plan was filed in 64.
For the house?
Yes.
The original house, yeah.
Well.
I would guess it might have been slightly.
No zoning, though, yeah.
340 Forest Street may actually be about the same distance as 328 from that corner.
Yeah, it's almost equidistant.
Yep. Any other questions? I'm not even gonna ask if there's any public comment because there's nobody here.
Except for your wife, which wants to come on the talk.
When are you planning on doing this?
As soon as we get the variance, we have a signed contract, we'd like to go ahead as soon as possible.
They want this for fall.
I'm sorry?
They want this for fall.
Before it starts to get cold.
Before it gets cold, right.
So, um, these plans were, I'm just, these plans were prepared by Four Seasons.
Sunroom, yes.
And maybe it's just too small, I keep, is there a date on them?
Um, that I don't know. It was done in June, I believe, is what we.
Yeah, but it's not, I, I don't see it on here.
He, he just uses it to identify the document for the public record.
I'm not saying it's a problem. I just want to make sure I say it properly.
Yeah, it was done at the same time that the contract was signed, which was in.
Yeah, it doesn't list a date on the document.
I think it's above the 1 of 1, but it's too small to read. You don't think that's the date?
It's just a sheet number.
Well, these are all the same.
This is file name.
So these are, there's, there's four sheets attached, but they're all the same.
Yeah, they're all the same.
Yeah, it's just one page, really. So I guess just do, um.
I'll just say undated.
Yeah, one, one page from Four Seasons.
It was around the beginning of May, those drawings, those renderings were done.
All right, well, um.
So, um, just, so it's gonna be at the elevation of the existing deck?
Correct.
So, are you doing, just putting like sonotubes in and posting up off of that?
Um, I don't know what their constructions, I know they do, I think it's cement, right, Mary Ann? Yeah, cement bases and that's.
So like it's open underneath?
Yes, open underneath.
Yeah, that's what it's gonna, okay. Just curious.
Any other questions? All right, so we're now at the point where you have the option to proceed, and at which point we would close the public comment. We deliberate amongst yourselves and vote. Are you comfortable moving forward?
What do you think?
I think so.
All right, do we have a motion to close, close the public comment?
Also move.
Do we have a second?
I'll, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we are unanimous, and we are deliberating. I think we know what Alexandria thinks.
I just want someone to give me good arguments.
Just looking at the wild shapes of some of these other lots here, but.
Yeah, I think, I, I.
I think they call, I think they call this other one a pork chop lot. That's what I had learned. I know, it sounds funny, but that's actually a definition.
I suppose it looks like a pork chop. The one that's on the back left of where they are, that has like the really long driveway.
It's like a cartoon dog.
Well, e, e, either of them, when you have sort of an arrow in and then, and then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, I know you said you would, you would like a positive note from the neighbors, but nobody ever comes really to, very few people come to us to, to say positive things. People are very ready to say negative things when they're unhappy.
They do do that.
And, and so, you know, we, we, I'm, I think that people's threshold of dissatisfaction is much lower than their satisfaction threshold.
Yeah, I think I might feel a little differently if the, if the house wasn't already, you know, 3.9 feet into the side yard. I mean, like what they're doing, like what they're doing, you know, where they're doing it makes sense for the overall structure. On that side, they're, I mean, as stated, they're only increasing the non-conformity by, you know, a fairly small amount.
Laura made a really good point with that one, huh?
That the neighbors had a problem with the, I don't know.
And it's also that, the 10.7 feet, it's not like it's, it's only at that point because this line is in parallel with the property line, you know, you move one foot back from it, and it, it's gonna be less than 10 feet.
Well, another way to think, it's, another thing is that, you know, my hesitation when we say like, oh, the next house over is like 100 feet away, and thus we don't have to worry about it, is like, well, okay, but that's their property, and they could build closer, right? But if you look at this property that is the neighbor, they can't build closer.
There's no way.
Right, there's, there's really not an option to build something that would be close to that property line.
Even if they could build property line to property line, that would be like a very weird.
Right, and so really where you get, the, the, what you're really saying is, is that we're allowing them to build it close to the neighbor's driveway. Right, because that, that's what will be, what, what does go through there, and there really can't be anything else.
And if the, if future neighbors took offense, there's lots and lots of yard to, like, plant screening that would be there all year. And if the, if future neighbors took offense, there's lots and lots of yard to like plant screening that would be there all year round.
There's plants in the solarium.
I'm going to say, like, to, to, to shield yourselves from the terrible flowers.
Well, all right, well, so a little bit to like Melissa's point, like, there are flowers that take a lot of auxiliary lighting to grow in our climate, even if they are inside, like, you know, there's, I can see potential objections from neighbors. But to Mike's point, if they had them, they will most certainly would have let us know, because everyone always lets us know. Yeah, I don't know. I would think future neighbors would be the more likely people to be concerned, and as I said, they can.
Move into what they're buying into.
They'll know what they're buying into, and again, they can't build anything close to it anyway.
Right, yeah, and there's lots of space to do whatever they want to block it.
You know, if, if, if 328 is a house, I don't imagine it would, but if it fell apart or burned down or something like that, and someone wanted to rebuild, they couldn't build it close to it.
It's still 20 feet or 19. I mean, it's, it's not like it's five feet.
Yeah.
Right.
And it is on cement, cinder block, cement tubes, so it's a.
I mean, I don't care what they put it on.
Well, someone had asked what it, what kind of foundation it had.
And I think it does, well, it does affect things like permeable ground and stuff like that, right?
Yeah, but conservation ain't here, so.
And I don't think there's any flooding concerns here. At least we haven't heard about it from the neighbors.
And we hear about that a lot, too.
Definitely hear about it.
I wasn't asking for any of those reasons, I was just curious.
Curiosity.
You're going to build your own sunroom?
Sunroom.
Maybe.
Don't give any ideas.
Don't sing in front of Paul.
All right, well, in the interest of time, shall we move on with the motion, or does anyone else have anything to?
Okay. I make a motion to approve a variance pursuant to the town, to town of North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195-7.3, table 2, dimensional requirements for one-side setback in the R1 zoning district for the purposes of constructing a sunroom. Specifically, applicant has requested a side setback needing a relief variance of 10.7 feet. The side setback proposed is 19.3 feet, and the side setback required per table 2 is 30 feet. And we will make reference to the plans included with the application that include a plot plan dated May 21st, 2025 by Andover Consultants, Inc., and one sheet prepared by Four Seasons Solar Products, Inc., which is undated.
All right.
Second?
I'll second it.
All right, Mr. Ginsberg?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs? Mr. Testa?
Aye.
Mr. Killig?
Yes.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
And I am an aye.
Oh, I thought you were going to give a no on the record.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
It's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right.
I try not to be cruel. I am human.
Sometimes for the record is, is also an important move in its own way.
And it's important to have the conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think of any of it, you would fall back on, this would be one that you could set your double digits to the side, but.
You know what did it? Because they're really, really hard-pressed. It was super.
Hope you enjoy it.
Thank you.
It was super, it would be super weird if they pulled, if they pulled it back literally like 0.8.
Yeah.
It's just going to look awkward.
Yeah.
And see, I'm not a horrible, mean person.
Nobody said you were.
All right. Just a stickler.
Just a stickler.
All right, a couple.
It's also good just so that if people come in and ask you the things they know, it's going to be self-sure, you know, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be automatic.
We are not thinking of it away, ZBA.
There's no rubber stamp in here.
All right, a couple miscellaneous items.
There's a gavel.
So there's a 40B correspondence from, regarding Meramec condominiums. We do not need to take any action there. It is just for the public record. There will be a meeting from KP Law on 40B, on the 40B process, as that is a possibility for the zoning board going forward. And that will be held on July 17th at 7:00 PM. It will be virtual for these members since we are not deliberating on any items. It will also be made available to the public on North Andover Cam and will be posted on YouTube after the fact, so it will be available to the public. They can get every bit of input that we get. And lastly, I would like to congratulate Ms. Craig Coman, Mr. Testa, and Ms. Rutherford on being reappointed to the board. You are stuck here for another three years, so.
As soon as we get sworn in.
We, we, yes, as soon as, you can still back out. You've still got time.
Where is the information going to be listed for the public? Is it going to be under like the North Andover zoning board or just somewhere on the North Andover?
So it is on the town calendar. It will be posted, it'll be sent out by the, the town email to serve. It should be on the town website. And there'll be, and it will be available to watch on North Andover Cam.
That's part of why we pushed it back to the 17th, right, was to allow time for notice?
Yeah, so we need to give notice, and also it was the time that the law firm was available, as part of it as well.
Perfect.
Did anybody go to the site tour?
No, it was in the middle of the day. I was like, oh, jeez.
Go to the what?
The site tour.
Our building commissioner.
Yeah, we.
The most interesting part, it's almost the exact same footprint as what the garage is there now.
Ah, interesting.
If you look over the top, obviously it's going to change it a little bit. It's almost the exact same footprint. Obviously it's going to be taller.
Right.
Park and garage is in between the building, one building's here, park and garage in between, and then another building behind, so that's how they're setting it up.
And we will, assuming that this goes forward, we will almost certainly have a site visit for the zoning board specifically, so we will have our own opportunity to visit and ask questions.
Yeah, because that was supposed, mostly for the site, the select board, right?
Yes, yeah, well, it was for, actually it was for the state. So it was for the, the state, and then, but folks from the town could come so that they could talk to the state about it.
Gotcha.
And so it was viewed as low priority for us, because we will have our own opportunity to visit, and we will be able to, to make our, our input then.
Yeah, I didn't read like any of that until after it, like the day that they were doing the site visit.
Who's the developer?
The owners of the mills.
Oh, they're doing it themselves? Because with that other one, they, they.
They sold it off. They sold the lots off. They didn't develop, but they just sold them the lots. It's Avalon, both Avalon buildings. This is their own project.
Did that area flood? Did that area flood when Jamie said all the flooding?
It's a little bit uphill, I think, isn't it?
That crazy.
Oh, yeah, exactly. It sits up.
All right, do we have a motion to end the meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Before we have a motion to end, is that our friend the lawyer's computer?
No.
Okay.
No, I think.
No, that stays here.
Okay, just wanted to double-check that for project purpose purposes.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.